The Board of County Commission meeting Tuesday, October 10th. This morning, our invocation will be led by our own Reverend Rudy Howard from Providence Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Chip Lible. Would everyone rise, please?
Today, Father, as we come together, united, Lord, I'm reminded of what Moses told the children in Israel. Let everything that's been done and said taken be done according to the originality. Let it be perfect. Let it be taken, be able to take and stand on the word that's given today. Lord, I ask you just taking bind Satan from these halls and just taking, let your word just be magnified and let the people that's here today, that's representing the citizens of this county, to just stand firm and just have the bold say, "This is the right thing to do, Lord." Lord, we just love you and we praise you in your son's precious name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Rudy. We appreciate that. Commissioner Lible, thank you. On the agenda, item number two, the chair will entertain a motion of approval of the minutes of September 26th.
Will you approve?
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further conversation? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Proclamation number three, Fire Prevention Week. Commissioner Goddard. Chief Romey, will you bring all your people up for this, please? And I'll meet you at the...
All right. Before I start, I do want to just mention, thank you for this. This is something that has always bothered me, that people are not prepared for fire prevention. This is something I practice very heavily in our house. Putnam County proclamation number 2017-78. Whereas Putnam County, Florida is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Putnam County. And whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home construction, and many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. And whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. And whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas, home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household. And whereas, practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. Whereas Putnam County's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Putnam County's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts," planned two ways out, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Therefore, be it proclaimed this 10th day of October 2017, that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims October 8th through 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week in Putnam County, and urges all the people of Putnam County to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Putnam County Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. I'd like to make a move that we accept this proclamation.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard?
In a second.
Proper second by Commissioner Lible. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Thank you.
If I may, just real quickly, I'd like to invite Superintendent Dr. Rick Cerency to come up and join us with this. It's the school district's commitment to allowing us into the schools to provide early fire protection education that really is the foundation for all of our fire prevention efforts in our county.
Welcome. And I'm so proud of our young man that we're about to recognize. And is he coming up at this time?
It is.
Okay.
You want to come up?
Yeah, thanks.
Chief, I think you have another one that you want to do.
We do. And this shows that fire prevention and the education works. I'm going to turn it over just a minute to Anthony, the Fire Marshal, to read the citation on what Jedediah did. But I'm going to ask Jedediah and his family to come up at this moment.
And bring your friends with you.
On the morning of June 27th, 2017, fire department units responded to a structure fire at 114 Peggy Lane in Georgetown. When units arrived at this location, they found two structures and three vehicles on fire. Fire crews were advised that all occupants were safely out of the home. During the investigation, the heroic actions of 11-year-old Jedediah Santmeyer were revealed. Jedediah, who was in the home with his younger brother and grandmother, heard a noise coming from the far end of the home. He went to investigate this noise and discovered smoke coming from a bedroom belonging to another family member. Jedediah was unsure if that family member was still at home, so he entered the smoke-filled room, remembering the survival skills taught in fire prevention programs at his local school. He stayed low to the ground and checked the bed and the remainder of the room to ensure it was not occupied. Jedediah found the room empty and quickly exited the room. He immediately went back to where his brother and grandmother were watching TV and alerted them of the danger. Jedediah, at the direction of his grandmother, escorted his younger brother to safety and remained with him until neighbors directed them to a place of safety away from the incident. Jedediah's actions on that morning went above and beyond the expected actions of an 11-year-old child and clearly demonstrated his selfless courage to protect the lives of his family. It is these actions and selfless courage that qualify him for the Citizen Medal of Valor.
Here's your Medal of Valor. Here's your citation. And Jedediah, we want to tell you thank you for everything you did. I know Grandma and Brother are very happy. I'm sure everybody knows your enthusiasm and all of that, but your training paid off and we truly, truly appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Bravery.
Thank you.
Why don't you come up here, remember, and get some pictures?
Gavel time?
Absolutely.
We're going to gather around you.
I want him up here.
You want him up here?
I want him in my seat. Come up here. You can sit right here and we're going to gather. Parents, grandparents, come on. We're going to, we'll gather around you. There you go. You sit there. You roll that up.
So the camera can see it.
There you go.
Like this.
All right, you ready? And we'll all gather around you. Grandpa, come on in here. Y'all, y'all up here.
I think we're loaded.
Big smiles.
This just goes to show the fire prevention program and, you know, the kids. And I'm going to invite Dr. Cerency up to say a few words. But, you know, it's key when we can get kids at the younger ages, teach them the right thing. And obviously, we have folks that are alive today to tell, you know, the stories.
That's right.
Thank you for having me today. And I can't tell you how proud I am of this young man, as you are. You know, we teach kids about the Florida State standards and about doing well on the test, but these are the kind of life lessons that, you know, we're just so proud to recognize. And, you know, we're raising young men, young women, to do great things in our county. And this is one example. And we are actually, at the next school board meeting next Tuesday, we're also going to recognize Jedediah for his vow. And I want to thank the county for doing so today. So thank you again for having us.
Thank you. Mr. Stout, you want to say a few words?
Sure. Mr. Adams, principal at Miller Middle School, called me last night. He wasn't able to be here today. And Jed and I have been around each other for six years now. I was at Middleton Bernie Elementary when he started kindergarten, all the way up through fifth grade. So we've known each other for a long time. And when Mr. Adams told me what he did over the summer, that doesn't shock me at all. Jed is the first kid that will come defend anybody. It doesn't matter who they are. He is an advocate for everybody in his class or not in his class. And he looks out for everybody. And actually, he was just telling me about two kids in the back, that he's trying to make sure that they stay on the straight and narrow. So he's doing a great thing. He is a great example of what Putnam County represents. And I appreciate you, Jed. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Congratulations and thank you. Chief, you have some good news for us?
One thing, real quick. As we've talked about on many occasions, the ISO Insurance Service Organization rates all of the fire departments in the country. And three of our departments just went through a rating, grading, and inspection. And I'm happy to announce that East Palaka Fire Department is a four.
Whoa, wow.
Pomona Park Volunteer Fire Department is a five.
Wow.
And the Satsuma Fire Department went from a five to a four. So that takes a lot of work on these, you know, all of the individuals' parts and all that. But it's hot off the press. And I want to make sure that everybody can take advantage of the new ratings and things like that. So it's very, very important to us to be able to give back to the citizens.
Make sure that the people that live in those areas contact their insurance agent about those new ISO rates. They'll see money back on their, on the cost of their insurance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could get Chief Romey, if you would just give a brief explanation of what ISO is and how we earn that accreditation.
Certainly. ISO is a grading scale. From one is the best, 10 is like not having a fire department. And you go down from there based on the points. And it's based on water, personnel, your equipment, things like that. There's a whole litany of scores that we have to go through and test and reports and all, and training records and just the, it's a very laborious task, to be honest with you. But at the end of the day, when we can go through that process and lower the rating, obviously, it helps out our citizens. And I would defer to Mr. Harvey as far as insurance rates and things like that and how well they, you know, you know, what are the breaking points. But the lower you go, the better off you are in insurance.
That's right. Thank you for your effort and the whole team.
Chief Romey, I put you on the spot every time you say this, but tell the story about the gentleman who came to the fire department with a check. And, you know, because there's people that haven't heard that story.
When we first started this process six or seven years ago, or maybe even longer now, we went through, you know, the grading. And the fire department went from a nine to a five. And the folks were there at the fire station one day, and a gentleman pulled up and handed him a check. And they said, you know, "What's this for?" And, you know, "We can't take it," kind of thing. And, no, he said, "I want to give it to you because that's what I saved on my insurance from going from a nine to a five. It was over $1,200."
That's right. Significant savings to our citizens of Putnam County.
Absolutely.
Chief, thank you so much for all your hard work in getting that done. All right. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Commissioner Pickens, if you'll read it. And if everyone will come up, all the purple people.
Lot of purple people.
The purple people.
They sure did.
Y'all look so nice today.
Well, Commissioner Turner is...
Yes, he does.
As close as I can get.
That's right.
Yeah. Everybody's got to really like each other on this spot, okay?
Okay. Putnam County Proclamation number 2017-77, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a crime that impacts all citizens of Putnam County, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, taking a dramatic toll on the criminal justice system, law enforcement, the healthcare community, and society as a whole. And whereas, each year in Putnam County, an estimated one in four women and one in nine men are victims of domestic violence that would translate to 13,000 individuals affected in our county. And whereas, it is vital for our community to support the victims of domestic violence and assist them with their grave financial, physical, and psychological losses, and to impose legal sanctions against perpetrators of personal violence. And whereas, the Lee Conley House is the only domestic violence center in Putnam County, providing 24-hour services and counseling to victims and their family, and has been awarded certification through Florida's Department of Children and Families. And whereas, the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners urges all citizens to actively participate in and support all programs sponsored by the Lee Conley House, thereby assisting in the elimination of domestic violence in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, that October 2017 is designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Putnam County, to participate in planned activities benefiting the Lee Conley House in its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families. Done, ordered, and adopted this 10th day of October, AD 2017. And I make the motion, we accept this proclamation.
We have a proper motion? Proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Commissioners, thank you very much for this proclamation. As you noted in the proclamation, it says Lee Conley House several times. Lee Conley House is not the only answer to domestic violence and the issue within our community. I felt that we needed to show the community, and we needed to show you, what it takes and who it takes in order to make a difference. It does take an entire community. So I extended an invitation to some incredible people. And I'd like to just honor them. With us today, of course, we have the wonderful Board of Directors of Lee Conley House, who selfishly give their time and talents and treasures to Lee Conley House, and under their guidance have led us into an amazing direction. We have the State Attorney's Office with us today and their advocates, who help us navigate the court systems with our participants. We have the Putnam County Sheriff's Department and their advocates. And I believe the sheriff is with us, too. And Colonel Wells sits on my Board of Directors. We have with us the Palaka Police Department and their advocates. We also have the Putnam County Health Department, who offers advocacy and counseling. We have, who else? Am I missing? We also have, and for this, I think, I am thankful every day, the remarkable advocates at Lee Conley House, who do the frontline work and who see the participants within the shelter on a day-to-day basis and watch them go through crisis to triumph. So this is your community. This is our community. And this is our answer to a community issue. So thank you very much. And we certainly are so happy for the support that we get from the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to defend the purple shirt. You can take it anywhere.
All right. Well, that concludes our items one through five.
Let's let them clear the room. Mr. Chairman?
I will. It's going to take half of our audience out. All right. Well, good. Thank you very much. And we will go now to our item number six, our public comment portion. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of this board. It is not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has not received prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We will be keeping score. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the back of the meeting room. The blue card's back there. And we ask that you submit them prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk over here to my left. We ask that if you haven't filled out a blue card, that doesn't mean you can't speak. It's just better for the record. So is there anybody here from the public wishing to speak to us this morning? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to, okay. Come on up, Mr. Howard. Got to go quick around here. We'll be moving.
Rudy Howard.
Mr. Howard, will you pull that microphone? There you go.
Rudy Howard, the pastor of Providence Baptist Church. I want to thank you for what you did in the recent times about North Providence Church Road. But if you could see in your heart to take and do something else, we've got three other areas that has got worse than the original one that you repaired two weeks ago. If you could just see in your heart, we're having revival this week. And last night, we almost had to pull three people out in cars. So it's really rough. And so I would just like for you to take and look at it at your convenience, drive out there. North, South Providence Church Road is impassable. So all the people that live on the west end of South Providence are having to come down North Providence. So the traffic is even worse than that. And so I'd like to leave with you one last comment.
Pastor Howard, I was just talking to Commissioner Goddard. We share that road. He's on your side. But I've talked to one of your people yesterday, and the south end is, I did drive out there, and it's impassable, to say the least. But hopefully, we can get something done. Our Public Works Director is here with us today. And we'll see if we can, I know you have a big crowd coming. And that whole area, if you drive around, is, their roads are just missing altogether.
My last comment is that my 34 years of the fire service and being chief, the last 10, there was a great philosophy that I kept. It takes less time to do something right than explain why you did it wrong. And it's ludicrous to have a roadway even with a ditch line. And so please just help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, do you know Mr. Tompkins back here? Ms. Tompkins, raise your hand. Okay. That's who you, yeah.
We'll have him come up just for a minute.
Sure. Mr. Tompkins, would you come up for a second? Commissioner Goddard would like to ask you a question.
It's not just ask a question.
There's no seat up here.
Since these roads, now there's 900 miles of roads. And a lot of those are in my area that are very bad.
Wait a minute.
And press hears from me regular, on a day-to-day basis, sometimes several times a day. And your road has come up. But I want him to address, because he has heard it from me several times about your road, amongst other roads. But if you'll explain why those aren't being done as quickly as we'd like to get them done.
Well, unfortunately, with the amount of rain we've had, these roads are still, the water table's up, the groundwater's up. We, you know, if we try to add material, all the material we have is wet right now. And what we need is, we've got to have some drying out period. We have gone in the South Providence Church Road, North, at least two or three times, trying to make them passable. We've added material a couple of times. Honestly, we're doing everything we can physically do. And as I tell people, I can't fight Mother Nature as much as I want to. These roads are so wet. We've got roads all over the county that are still underwater, that water hasn't receded yet. And, you know, I'm not trying to be funny, but I can't grade water right now. And, you know, we will go take another look at it and see if we can make another pass to the grader or something. But as soon as we grade it, two or three cars go down it, they start rutting it up. And before long, it's right back in the shape it was in. So until we get some drying out period... So until we get some drying out period, we're doing everything we can to make them passable. That's all I can tell you. My guys are out working ten, twelve hours a day still.
And just so everyone does realize, I know Press doesn't want to hear from me all the time, or any of the other commissioners, I know he's doing the best he can.
I hear from every one of you, so.
Mr. Lible. I just want to, on behalf of all of us, and I know they feel that way, but thank you and the whole Public Works Department. You guys are working incredible hours, and all the staff. I mean, post-storm, not once, twice, but three times now, we've had events back-to-back. It's very difficult times, and you look pretty fresh today, so you're getting, thank you. I just want to say thank you.
But we will take another look at it. If there's anything we can possibly do, we will. We're not ignoring these. We're doing what we can to get these roads passable.
Okay. Ms. Tompkins, I was, yesterday I was over in Commissioner Goddard's Hunter Road.
Yes.
And, I mean, that's a road that's still underwater.
Yes.
And, and it was raining when I was there, and I was like, Lord, we don't need any more. And then I go to my district, and they graded some of the roads, and the sand is still, from some of these areas are sugar sand again, and you're like, we can't win from a mile apart almost.
I know.
It's just crazy.
We actually got a phone call about having too much dust on one of the roads that we just fixed, and so we, you know.
Thank you, that's Tinsley in my area.
Yes, it is. I didn't want to say that, but.
No, that's okay. It's one or the other. But again, let's remind people, and the audience needs to know, June fifteenth, we had a burn ban in Putnam County.
Yes.
And we weren't going to have fireworks in Inilacan because of that. Then all of a sudden, we started getting a little rain, and within a two-month span, we got, at the end of my dock, seven feet of water.
Yes.
So how do you deal with that kind of moisture? The ground's saturated, and it's just, we're holding water at my house, so.
And what people don't realize, it's still coming. I mean, all these tributaries in the ground is still draining itself. We've had roads that we thought were okay, that we now have water on them again. The water's still coming back up. It's not, it's going to take a while for it to go away. But order of magnitude, according to the rainfall amounts, we had between two and three foot of rainfall between these three storms, the nor'easter hurricane and nor'easter. I mean, we're almost equivalent to what Houston got, you know, and you start looking at those magnitudes of the rain we had over the whole county, it wasn't just isolated areas. I mean, we had the equivalent of the five-hundred-year storm with the amount of rainfall we had in probably just over a month's period. We designed, normally roads are designed to the ten-year storm event, so that's the magnitude we're dealing with. And it is overwhelming. I'll be the first to admit, it has been overwhelming to us, but we haven't given up. We're out there every day doing the best we can.
And we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, done with public, oh, I'm sorry, Colonel Wells.
Sorry, Sheriff Loach had to leave, because, you know, even sheriffs have to go to training, so he had a training session this morning, but he did want me to mention a couple of things to you. First of all, along those lines, we just wanted to kind of give you an update that we have continuously through the week and weekend been posting and giving out the no-wake zone, or the no-wake courtesy signs that the county has purchased. That seems to be going very well. We're receiving a lot of requests for them. We streamlined the process on how to get the requests when they come into the county admin office, and I think they're going well. We've received a lot of positive public comment on those from the citizens. So I think that was a plan that's doing the best that we can for the citizens at this time. And secondly, we wanted just to make sure that everybody's aware that in continued support of the Lee Conley House, the Sheriff's Office is going to be doing several fundraisers throughout the month. One notable, which will be open for law enforcement officers, is we've advertised a competition for Putnam County's Top Gun, where we've invited all the deputy sheriffs and all the officers, and they will pay an entry fee and compete for the best shooter in Putnam County. So that one's open to law enforcement officers, but open to the public, and we want everybody to know and be invited, on the twenty-fifth, from five to nine, your deputy sheriffs will be waiting tables at Beefo Brady's and donating all of our tips to the Lee Conley House. So just want to encourage everybody to try to stop by, bring your wallets when you do, and we're trying to raise some money for Lee Conley. So again, apologize for the sheriff's early departure, he had to go to training, but he did want me to mention those things to you guys.
Colonel Wells, before you leave, the commissioners can't compete in the competition shooting. We might could outshoot somebody, you never know.
I think that's the concern. We don't want that to happen, to be shown up. Please, I'll get you the date for that. Please come out. We'll be at the Polacka, the city Polacka is letting us use their firing range on Moody Road, so we will be at the firing range on Moody Road for that, and I'll give you all the details to it.
Thank you.
It'll be a good time, least to come watch.
Thank you, and we'll see you on the twenty-fifth.
All right, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, any, anybody else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to consent agenda, item seven. Commissioners, is there any items you wish to pull?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
And I have none.
Shortest list I've ever seen.
The chairman will entertain a motion of approval of items A, B, and C.
Move approval.
You have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
And I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion on items A, B, and C of the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. This meeting will be recessed, and we will actually go into, we'll call our Port Authority meeting to order. And the first item of business, Commissioners, is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen.
I move for approval of the minutes.
Proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Item number B, Public Works' extension of lease with First Coast Technical College through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, for space at the Bargeport Facility for Welding School. Mr. Suggs, I'm going to turn this over to you, and we can go from there.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the extension of the lease for First Coast Technical College out of the Bargeport Facility for the Welding School. It is recommended by staff that we move for approval of this lease.
Okay. All right, is there any comments on that?
Just one. Who negotiated the lease?
Mr. Maney, was that part of my arrival?
Yes, that was, this lease has been continuing on for some time now. There really was no renegotiation of it. The county's hasn't had anybody else express interest in this, so we're just happy to have somebody in there at this point. Obviously, if we have some other interests expressed, we'll take a look at that in the future, but for this year.
My comments are good. You held line when they, we got the same rent, and we didn't back down.
Right.
It was a fair deal for the square footage. Good work.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, any other comments? The chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. This will end our Port Authority meeting, and we will reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting with item number nine, Codes Enforcement, Fine Reduction Case Two Thousand Sixteen dash zero zero five-two-eight. Mr. Sammons, you have the floor, please, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
If Brandon can put the computer up on the screen.
These properties at seven-thirty South Highway Seventeen in San Mateo, the owner, Malice and Sea Inc., leased the property to a person who started doing work to create an internet cafe without proper permits. The length of time that it was not in compliance was nine months, but the owner, because of their lease, didn't have control of the property until they got rid of the lessee. So once they got in control of the property, they brought it into compliance. Because this was a business, the special magistrate had made the daily fine a hundred dollars a day, so the fine got pretty high pretty quick. It's a ten-thousand-dollar daily fine right now. Staff figured out that our costs involved in processing this case was six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, and we're recommending that the fine be reduced to six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars if it's paid within forty-five days.
Okay. Is the applicant here, Mr. Sam?
I'm not sure. I've never met them.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any questions?
I have none.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move the staff recommendation to reduce the fine to six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars if that was the right amount, wasn't it? Six-twenty-eight if paid within forty-five days.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner.
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Mr. Sammons? Case number two thousand eleven dash zero-nine-four-three.
Yep, this is one-twenty-one Gordon Chapel Road. The current owner is here today. This is, was unsafe housing. Roof on this structure was in terrible shape, and there are other issues also. Length of time to re-achieve compliance was five years and eleven months, but the owner of the property now bought it in February of this year by tax deed sale. There were two liens on the property. He's owned the property for approximately seven months. The fine is at sixteen thousand, fifteen thousand six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Our costs involved are one thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars, and I've recommended that the fine be reduced to the one thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars if it's paid within six months of board action, and.
Is the applicant here, Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Wiles is here.
Mr. Wiles, would you like to speak? Please come up, please, sir. Yes, please, speak right into the microphone.
My name's David Wiles. I'm a teacher in Putnam County and a neighbor of Mike and Shirley Rutledge. That's them right there. We very much appreciate the fine reduction, I think it's really reasonable. But what we're doing is we have a special case, we think, and we're just appealing to Penny to hopefully have it reduced more. So just wanted to have our case be heard, and hopefully, hearing the circumstances, we might have some further help. Mike and Shirley, to make a long story short, pretty much have been victimized, which I'll briefly talk about. But first, in the early two thousands, Shirley had a stroke, and Mike had to go on disability with major back issues, also some stomach ulcer issues. During that time, and not understanding the tax system that well, they lost their home, which has been in Mike's family for at least five generations, the family land and their mobile home. At that time, a fellow named Stephen Peskovich got the property at a tax deed sale and persuaded them to give him some money. He was trying to make some money on it. Eventually, they came up with a deal where they would buy the property back from him, and he charged them three thousand dollars down and six hundred a month, which they were, they paid every single month. I came into the story when Donna and I were talking at the tax office, and we learned that this piece of property, which was close to me, I didn't know Mike and Shirley before then, but found out that it was going up for tax sale, and I went to speak to them, and I said, you know you're losing your property? And they said, no, we didn't know. What happened was, was the owner, Stephen, was collecting money from them and not paying the taxes, okay? Furthermore, just as houses go, there was a lot of damages, you know, just occurred. I wouldn't call them damages, repairs that needed to be done. A new well had to be put in in the last decade and a half, the septic system had to be worked on, and the roof needed major repairs, okay? The quote from Stephen is, I'm not paying for any of that. So Mike and Shirley were paying for the things that needed to be done, as they could, and they put two thousand dollars into a roof that the roofing company, I talked with the guy, and he said, we were just trying to help them out, they, all they had was two thousand dollars, so we came and put some metal on and did what we could to help them out. They didn't pull the permit. So fines accumulated on the permit, and of course, Mike and Shirley, you know, thought the roofing company was doing what was right, so. So fines had accumulated, the taxes had accumulated without them knowing it, and everything kind of hit them when they realized that they were losing their place again, and Stephen told them, well, they can just get out, or they can tear the house down. So I came in, perhaps maybe altruistically or stupidly, but I cumbered all, some of this problem when Donna and I were talking. And we have been up on the roof for the last month, and we've got the roof finalized, we've done the whole roof, and I want to say that despite Mike's back, he was up there every minute with me, putting the roof on. Shirley, and I think it's important to recognize their character, too. Shirley works at the Super Value in Hawthorne, and at four-thirty, five days a week, she gets up, four-thirty in the morning, she manages the deli there. So it's a situation where they are working and contributing to the community and trying real hard. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, but that's just the situation, and I'm into this ten thousand dollars trying to help them. They're going to be trying to pay me back, but we're just seeking some help, that's all, so.
So let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You came in and basically bought this place on tax sale from the guy who had it before, who sold it to them, and now you're bringing all the updates up, and you're reselling it back to them to try to help them?
Pretty much. They, and if I can remember the several points that you made there, he was in the process, they, he made a contract with them to sell it back to them, but what I understand is there was never a goal for that. He let it go to taxes. Seven thousand dollars had accumulated, which of course they couldn't come up with. So he was collecting money, let it go, which they thought that he was paying the taxes on it. So yes, I just came in, realized, and with Donna, we were all trying to help, and of course, you know, Donna doesn't have any power to do much anyway, but she was, we were all working together on it. And so, yeah, I just came in and purchased it, not to make money on, but with the idea of getting their house back to them, so. Right, if that makes sense.
No, I think it's very admirable that you're out there and you want to help somebody get back on their feet and protect their assets, and I.
Well, thanks, but I didn't realize how much it was going to be. I wasn't even aware of the code case, and I, it was going so quickly, I didn't ask Donna, and Donna didn't tell me, and so we've run into a lot of, what's, there's a saying, no good deed goes unpunished. So we've been roofing and doing a lot of.
I hear that a lot.
A lot of stuff. But anyway, we just appreciate any help that, if you feel this is a special circumstance that could, that could reduce some of these fines. Everything's getting paid caught up, and I'm going to be responsible for the taxes, working with them now, so things are, things are on the up and up, so.
Mr. Sam, I have a question.
Sure.
Is everything, all the permits, this whole thing is cleaned up, and there's no more issues on permits or building codes?
That's true, yes.
Codes enforcement or nothing?
Nothing.
So they can walk out of here pretty much?
Yep, the only thing that's staying, left over is the fine, and that's what we're here about today, so.
Commissioner Lible.
Additional question. Was there a mortgage between the party he mentions and Mr. Wiles submitted to you or special magistrate?
I'm not very involved in code enforcement anymore, so I really wasn't at the meeting. I don't know what they talked about back then.
I don't think anything was recorded, Shirley, Mike, did anything?
Not necessarily recorded, but any agreement that you can produce.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just an agreement between you and this couple.
Oh, agreement with me?
Yes.
As far as the money, they're going to try to pay me back, and they're paying me back monthly now, trying to, so.
So they are the tenants in the home?
Oh, yes, sir. And what I told them is although the county views it as my place, technically, this is their home, and that's, they've lived there since, well, it's been in Mike's family for multi-generations.
Are the, your intentions to sell them the home?
My intentions, when I first got this, not knowing them, I said at the very least, I'm trying to create a park when I die for the community out there. So that was my idea, that at least, at the very least, the land could be part of the park.
But my question was?
Is my, was it my intention to sell it back to them? As we've gotten, become friends, my intention of that is that now, but at the very beginning, I was just trying to help them keep their home, and like I said, when I die, it could.
You do plan on selling them the home?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, this is their home.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Lible. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Board, what's your pleasure?
I may, I understand what you're saying, and, but we also try to recap our cost. I wouldn't have a problem with a slight reduction to move this down to eight hundred, but that would, and that's where I'd want to put it, that we would accept eight hundred on, you know, to satisfy the lien that's on this property.
Okay, Board, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard to reduce the fine from eleven-seven. Okay, Board. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard to reduce the fine from eleven seventy-eight to eight hundred dollars.
Does it include six months for payment, the motion? Yes.
Within the six, the hundred and eighty days of B O C C action?
I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We have a proper second by Mr. Turner. Commissioner Turner, any further discussion on this matter? Go right ahead, sir.
I served for quite a while on the Code Board and quite a while as chairman of the Code Board. And I realize that we have to go through these issues just like we did to make, to make a difference. But we don't have to be non-compassionate about it when they're doing everything they can to clean their place up and they finally get it done. It usually always turns out to be a money issue. If the people had money, they would've already done it. So, uh, anytime that we can, when they do finally get into compliance, anytime we can reward that, I think helps our program. So...
Good saying, Mr. Turner. Any other comments? All right. We have a proper motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Your fine has been reduced to eight hundred. You gotta pay it in a hundred and eighty days, within a hundred and eighty days. Thank you. Thank you. All right. God bless you. All right. Fine reduction, partial lease, release of lien, case two thousand eleven dash zero five eight four, two thousand twelve dash zero five six one, two thousand twelve dash zero two three seven. Taxese Florida REO LLC. Mr. Sammons?
These three cases are on properties that are not one forty-five Strawberry Street. They're owned by, they were owned by Taxese, uh, REO LLC. Uh, this is not the first time that we've dealt with this issue with that company. And the, uh, the lady that bought the property from them didn't realize, or they didn't tell her that there was liens that attached to that property also. So she bought it and now she's trying to sell it to somebody who wants to put a house or a mobile home on it. And the liens have popped up in the, in the, uh, closing issues. So, uh, they are requesting that a partial lien be done just on, on the one forty-five Strawberry Street. That would leave the liens still in play on the other properties where that were code enforcement issues and any other properties that Taxese owns in the, uh, in the county. The liens that are active are on one twelve Little Road in Interlock and one twenty-seven YNC Circle in Satsuma. And there's another one that I neglected to put on there. I don't remember where that is. But the, uh, um, property value at one forty-five Strawberry Street is eighty-four hundred dollars. Requiring all liens to be paid would likely make the property go delinquent on taxes. The property owner was naive, like a lot of first-time buyers are, people who don't deal with real estate very often. If you look on there, you can see in this little last thing where it says to have it hold, that states that they're, she's subject to the liens that are on the property, which I'm sure she would not have picked up. Staff is recommending that, uh, that we do a partial release of lien, uh, but require the owner to pay two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Mr. Sammons, I'm gonna open up for questions, but I wanna ask one first.
Okay.
Basically, we put a lien on everything that this company...
By state law, when, when there's, when, like, if I own a piece of property or own several pieces of property and, uh, I had a codes case and we got liens on everything I own in the state of Florida gets a lien on it.
My question, my question is, we have three liens. Thirty-four fifty, forty-six thirty-two sixty-five, and the others for twenty-two fifty.
Correct.
We're not reducing any of those liens.
We're not touching those liens.
Okay, so those liens are gonna remain on different properties throughout the county.
Correct.
We're just charging two hundred and fifty for what?
Getting the lien taken off of this particular property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lavelle saw your hand up, sir?
Well, I just wanted to, to come in at the end. We, this board is at will, I think Mr. Manning will agree with me, to modify staff recommendations here, excluding that property if we desire to do so.
Correct.
And then we'll still collect on the other two.
That's correct.
Well, now, there's three properties, but this, there's really four here.
Right.
This property, Strawberry, had nothing to do with any of it.
Right.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
But you wanted to break this one out.
Cause they want, they wanna sell it. Yeah. So we're trying to help them do that, so that the liens aren't on there.
Yeah, I'm just, I would suggest the motion reflect that.
And if I might?
Yes, Mr. Goddard.
The two hundred and fifty dollars is just recapsuring our cost?
Our, no, this, we've had discussions about this on, uh, with Stacy on another issue, uh, that was up, I don't know, three or four months ago. The lien is yours. You can not charge, you can just relea-, you can release, do a partial release on this property without collecting anything. You can charge something in between or you can say, you know, you have to pay all three liens, but, uh, so those are the basic options you have. And, uh, previously with our discussion, uh, when we talked about it, it felt like, you know, even though you were stupid and bought it and didn't know what you were doing, you learn a lesson, maybe you pay two hundred and fifty bucks for a lesson. But I don't think Brian or I care if we collect that two hundred and fifty dollars, cause the lien is still in place on other properties.
Two things.
Thank you.
One, just, you have to keep in mind that, um, when we present these to you, A, they're your lien. So this body can do whatever it wants to with the lien. It's in favor of the Board of County Commissioners. So whether you take zero or whether you charge the whole thing, makes us no difference at all. It's just a, a process for us. Secondly, keep in mind that when these things come to you, it is kinda like recycling, if you will. It's recycling of property. Right now, it's flawed. It's got all these liens against it. And in many cases, the liens exceed what the value of the property is. And it, once that happens, if you hold them to the entire amounts, you're probably never gonna get that recycled. It's just gonna sit out there and be a problem on the landscape. We've got enough property in this county that is just in that situation now. So just understanding, we do have a lot of people out there. There's a right way and a wrong way to do a real estate transaction. And believe me, more than half of the people out there are gonna do it the wrong way. They're not gonna do a title search. They're not gonna get title insurance. They're trying to keep it on the cheap. That's, that's all they can afford. So again, what we're trying to do and what we're presenting to you on most of these is, is an attempt to encourage the recycling of these properties. A lot of them end up going through the tax process, the tax deed process. Two of these three that you've heard today have done just that. Sometimes we get some money back out of that sale. Sometimes we don't. But again, they have to be in compliance before they come to you for a fine reduction anyway. They have to be in compliance. Otherwise, we don't even process them. So at this point, we're trying to just finish the recycling process on these things.
Mr. Manning, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does it cost two hundred and fifty dollars to register the release of liens with the court system? What's it cost to do that?
Oh, I can't really answer that off the top of my head.
Sorry.
I, I'm sure it wouldn't be that much. I'm sure it would be less than that. But you're talking about the recording fee and, and doc stamps and I, I wouldn't think it would, it would be that high. I think the, the reason, if I might, um, that two hundred and fifty dollars was, was chosen. It really kinda gets to the issue of, of folks buying properties really without getting, um, title insurance. And, 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 and in discussion with staff, we thought, well, that's, you know, that's kind of a reasonable amount. You know, folks really ought to be doing their due diligence on these properties. And title insurance is, is one way of doing that due diligence and, and making sure that, that folks are protected from these types of things. And, um, so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's an amount, um, that we, that we came up with, um, that we felt was kinda, represents, you know, some risk, um, being, you know, being put on, um, uh, those folks that, that are buying these things that aren't doing their due diligence. And it also, um, obviously goes, goes towards, uh, some of the staff time and, and costs involved in, in pursuing these matters.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Sammons?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner?
Uh, Mr. Salmon, um, I guess I just wanna try and, and, uh, and get this completely straight. The property was bought by Taxese to start with.
Correct.
And then when they owned it, the, the three liens that they had against them attached to all their properties that they owned.
That's correct.
And then they turned around and sold that one property, which didn't generate any of the tax liens.
Correct.
And, and that, and the person who bought that piece of property is the one that's asking today for a, uh, reduction or to, to, uh, to take those other three liens off of this piece of property.
That's correct.
And so why is it that we're charging them two hundred and fifty dollars? I don't understand that.
We're not charging them anything yet. You guys decide if we're gonna charge them anything.
But the staff recommendation was two hundred and fifty dollars. Why are we doing that to, was that what you were saying, Mr. Manning?
Yeah.
Trying to cover some staff time and, and the cost of the, of the recording and things like that?
Well, yes, that, like, as I said, um, as well as, uh, if, if people, we really would like to, to do some due diligence before buying these properties. And one way in doing that would be, would be to go to a title company and get a closing when they're purchasing these properties and getting title insurance. And that, that would just, uh, if they did that, they would see that there are these issues and those issues would be resolved before they actually purchase the property.
I can kinda understand why they may not have done it when the total purchase price was twenty-three hundred and fifty dollars. But they might not have deemed that it was important enough to get it done. I'm not advocating that we, um, that we don't charge them something. I just don't know, like Mr. Hammond said, you know, we want these properties to go spin back in the economy again and to be, go through the, the motions of buying again. And if we don't, they'll just own them forever with tax liens on them and they'll go right back through the tax deed process with the liens on them.
Sure.
So, uh, I was just wondering how we came up with the two, two fifty. I mean, I don't know that, that, uh, that we should count it as part of a fine or something because somebody didn't do their due diligence on the, on the thing. But even though I agree with you a hundred percent, um, I just don't know that charging these people two hundred and fifty dollars will make any difference.
I will admit to you, it's fairly arbitrary. It is a, essentially a stupid fee for not handling the real estate transaction correctly.
We gotta get away from using that word. It's been used twice and they, they, they didn't do the right thing. That's all.
I don't have any problem with, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any problem whatsoever in following staff's recommendation. But I don't know that we need to, to, uh, to find the people again for making a mistake that they clearly know they already made. I mean, I think it should be, whatever the cost should be in the, the, uh, fee that Mr. Hammond just referred to. Probably, I'm not, I don't think we should be the person that, that, um, implies that fee, so, or applies that fee. So, you know, I'm, I'm rea-, I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready, sir.
I'd like to charge you a hundred and twenty-five dollars and reduce, and take the three liens off these people's property for a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner to reduce the fine to one twenty-five and remove the liens. And a proper second by Commissioner Lavelle. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, appointments. Commissioners, are there any appointments that you wish to fill? Starting to my right, Mr. Lavelle?
Uh, I have none, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Goddard?
I have none.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
For the Fishing Fund Advisory Committee, District Three, I would like to nominate Dana Jones.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Turner has nominated Dana Jones. And seeing that's, is there any other ones that you'd like to make? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before moving ahead, if I could just, um, talk for a minute procedurally, um, on, on our appointments. I, I know in, in the past, we've kinda gone through these as a whole and, and then, and then the board votes on, on those appointments. But for those appointments that are, um, limited to appointments by a particular district, the board as a whole does not have to vote on those. You just acknowledge the appointment being made by the individual commissioners. Now, if it's an at-large appointment, um, uh, something such as that, then, then the board as a whole, um, would vote on those. It's, it's a technicality, but I just wanted to point that out. So, you know, basically, um, the board, um, you can just, um, acknowledge the appointment being made and, and, and move on.
Okay. I do have one procedure. I thought, I thought I heard you say, within the district. I don't think we made this committee where they had, the commissioners had to point within, inside their geographical district.
No, I mean by the district.
By the district.
By the district. Correct.
That's fine. So the, so the Board of County Commissioners realizes the appointment of Dana Jones on the Fishing Fund Advisory Committee from the Commissioner Terry Turner. There you go.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. I'm gonna change some things around. Um, County Attorney, you'll go next.
I guess I have nothing, nothing of note.
Okay. Clerk of the Court?
Uh, no, sir. Mr. Smith, sorry. He couldn't be here today. He's at a conference in Orlando. And his apologies for not being here, but we're glad to be here the rest of the day.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Downs. And now, our County Administrator, the only reason I did that, cause I want you closer to us. That's all. So County Administrator, Mr. Terry Seg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing that the County Administrator has is the Observance of Veterans Day, which is coming up in November. Uh, I've understood it's the, it's been a prior practice of the county to, uh, not close on Fridays, Observance of Holidays. However, uh, in speaking with the Clerk of the Court, the Sheriff's Office and, and getting information from the School Board, all those offices are recognizing the Veterans Day holiday on Friday. So I think it would be, uh, prudent for the county also to recognize that holiday on Friday. That way, we don't have county offices closed on Friday and then county offices are cl-, again, closed on Monday, inconveniencing the citizens of, of Putnam County.
I agree.
And that is consistent with the B O C C policy?
Well, that's, um, I believe your decision. So, um, this board...
Just, yes, sir, you're absolutely correct. But again, uh, in the spirit of open and, uh, and transparent communication, I wanted to bring it to the board so that we would all understand that we're gonna go ahead and start honoring the B O C C policy and recognizing the holidays on the day that they fall.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all for you?
That's it.
Do you not bring another project into the county on your second weekend off?
You're really setting the bar high, sir.
Commissioner comment. Uh, starting to my right, Commissioner Lavelle.
I just wanna, um, reiterate the importance of the Lee Connolly fundraiser on the twenty-fifth of this month, month. That organization was before us. You saw how many people were in support this morning. And it had very, very humble beginnings to a giant problem in our county.
Right.
And that's domestic violence. But they've got a small army, um, waging war against that problem and they're doing a great job. And they have really grown that program to, uh, the point that it's very effective. So let's come out on the twenty-fifth and have the sheriff and his staff serve us dinner at Beef O'Brady's.
There you go.
That's all I have today, Mr. Chair.
That's a wonderful statement, Commissioner Lavelle. Commissioner Goddard?
Well, yes, I do have several things here. I wanted to thank everyone for, uh, first off, for being here. I wanted to thank all those that was involved with this budget. I was actually a little, not really stunned, but, uh, in the paper the other day was, uh, a comment about, uh, using the reserves. Anybody who heard me then hears me now. I'm totally against using the reserves. I wanted to build our reserves because say, right now and then, we get hit with a hurricane that cost us very much. But I wanted to throw in here that even though I was adamant against using the reserves, so was every commissioner up on this bench. None of us wanted to go into the reserves. We all did everything we could. We went through countless meetings on these budgets, which were open for everybody. We did everything we could to provide the services that the people want and take care of the expenses of operating this county. One of them being the insurance that has really gone up. And then what a lot of people don't understand is we still have not received money from the last hurricane, but we still had to, we still had to man this. With that said, I was very impressed with how everything was done during those storms and how quickly we did respond. To the moving of trees out of the way, to getting the generators going at the special needs area. Everything that was done was great.
Everything that was done was great. I do ask that we have a post Irma gathering workshop. We have a list of, I mean, a long list of all the great things that we did. But we also saw a few weaknesses. Some of them had nothing to do with the county. One of the biggest weaknesses I saw was with the internet, which is not the county's responsibility. But we're trying to send out digital messages that were not being received because people didn't have it. But that is one of the things I'd like to do. And we've made mention of having an Omni Bunsen. And I realize probably still not able to do that. But I'd like to establish a citizens' task force on several issues. Some of those being, you know, mosquito control, economic development, several things that... The commission, we do everything we can, but we can't do it all and we don't know all the information that we need. And I've seen that more and more up here, that we need staff to supply us with these ideas. We also need the public to be involved with a lot of these things. And I've seen it before in just the ship program, how well that works by having the public come in and be involved in it. And with that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Goddard, Mr. Suggs, do you want to respond to the emergency wrap-up meeting?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I could. I believe, correct me, Mr. Ryan, if I'm incorrect here, but I believe we have a follow-up meeting scheduled for October 20th. If, I believe that's correct. I would also like to, prior to setting a location for that meeting, I'd like to reach out to Mr. Simpson at the DOC as well as Mr. Romei about a location. I have that where we can have some sit-down conversation and make it very transparent to what it is that we're doing. So I'll work on that as well.
And that meeting will have to be public notice since I'm sure we all want to be there.
What is the date again?
October 20th.
But location will be determined at this point. And, you know, Commissioner Goddard, I want to mention to you, citizens' task force. I think that's a wonderful idea if you'll get with Mr. Suggs. And we'll bring that up at a workshop. And you can put your ideas in writing and we can entertain that there. Also want to talk about your budget that you mentioned. We did ask the, everybody to bring in solutions to the budget. And we worked very diligently over this last year getting that budget together. So I applaud this commission for doing what we needed to do to keep Putnam County alive and going forward. And we have a three-year commitment to do a whole lot better on ad valorem taxes and reserves. So I appreciate those comments, sir. Mr. Turner, my far left, sir?
Yes, it seems like I'm getting inundated as well as I'm sure that all the other county commissioners are with drainage and yard debris issues. I just want the public that are watching this show today to understand that while Public Works is working long hours and working diligently to get these items taken care of, they're not magic. We still have, if I'm not mistaken, eight roads that are still impassable in the county, closed impassable. I realize that when somebody's ditches are full out in front of their house, it's important to them and I don't want to degrade that importance to them whatsoever. But I hope that everybody will understand when, that the Public Works absolutely has just got to prioritize what they're doing. And a road that's closed has to supersede a road that has high water on the ditches, but is still passable. So, and Mr. Gast, I'm sure they're picking it up as fast as they can. But when we got, when we got all the last water, it flooded a lot of the debris that's in the ditch, that was placed in the ditches and things. They can't get their scuba gear out and go get the debris out of the ditches. So as I think Press stated earlier, you know, the biggest thing we need is just some dry weather to help this situation along and then they can move in and do some of these. And so I just wanted to kind of mention that in my comments that, you know, while everybody's complaint is important, a little patience is going to be necessary to get through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. You're exactly right. Commissioner Pickens?
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. I do agree with Commissioner Goddard and Commissioner Chairman Harvey on the budget. We knew this year was coming and it was going to be tough. And I think the commissioners did a good job, along with staff, Stacy Papel, congratulations, thank you so much. And all the department heads, constitutional officers to put this budget together. And we do have a three-year plan to move us forward where we can bring the military rate back down. And I think we're, better times are ahead for Putnam County. Along the lines with Commissioner Turner, yeah, we are getting a lot of calls about road issues and debris. And I do congratulate Press and Public Works for doing the best job you can. But it is hard to do something with a road that's underwater. So we just have to wait for this water to receive. And I live on the river and it's still just about as high as it was after the hurricane. So it's going to be a little while. Since this will probably be the shortest commission meeting that I've been involved in, I want to drag it out a little bit. So since Larry Gast is, Mr. Gast is here, can you give us just an update? Larry, hate to put you on the spot, about the pickup and what areas they're in? I know that they're in District One now because I see a presence there. And if you picked up any subcontractors to kind of help with the situation?
Yes, they have spread out. When we first got started, we had them concentrated in the East Palatka, San Mateo areas to get the kinks worked out and everything. Now they've split up. They've got one group in the south end, going from Georgetown, working north and east from there. We've got another group that's inside of Palatka. They were on Palm and they're going to Penile and Silver Lake and those areas. We've got another one in Interlochen that's working and one out on Rest River Road that's working. Some people are getting confused. I've been having several calls that, when are they coming to my street? I live in Melrose. I saw them picking up the debris. The state contractors are picking up on state and federal roadways. It is not our people that are doing it. And we're just trying to relay the information back to them that there's, right now, one, two, three, four different people hauling into the landfill. We had to open up a different way of doing business because DEP has a contractor that's doing waterway debris and they're bringing it in. So they got to have their tower monitor. City of Palatka has their tower monitor bringing in debris. The state has a tower monitor bringing in debris. And we have our tower monitor bringing in debris. So we basically had to move these people all over the landfill to keep from having a huge queue of vehicles trying to get through the towers. So if you come to the landfill, you'll see that there's a little bit of a different setup, but we got it lined up where most people can pull off and get around. But we have a lot of different contractors out there working and doing stuff, not necessarily ours. But there are several out there and we will get around to everybody eventually. We're trying to prioritize areas and get ones that are the most dangerous to the citizens.
Mr. Gast or Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question? If I'm understanding correctly, that the first time they went through and picked up, they kind of picked up the easiest stuff because there was a lot of stuff they didn't pick up the first time around. And I'm sure it was the bigger trees or the what-have-you that needed some saw work done. A lot of these trees didn't come off public, I mean, off private property. They came off the roadways themselves. And all they did, you could see the tree sitting there and the big part was just cut up enough to get it shoved over out of the road after the storm. So did somebody come back at some point and do, pick those kind of deals up and saw them up and whatever?
They will pick those up once they get cut up and we get notified. They'll be back. We're keeping a running list of those. One of the last things that are picked up are stumps because stumps are supposed to be numbered, photographed, kept independently of everything else. Back in previous hurricanes, FEMA had problems with people loading stumps because stumps get a higher payment than regular brush does. Loading stumps on, driving them through, not unloading them, pulling around, coming back through later and using the same stump over and over. So by numbering and photographing, you verify that those are the actual stumps that were disposed of. But I know those are the most eyesore one of them all, is the big stump with the...
I'm all right with the stumps. That wasn't really my question. I'm assuming that when you come back again, the contractors are going to saw stuff up? Or you send somebody there ahead of time to saw it up?
Generally, generally...
If it's not private people that need to saw this stuff up, it's not their tree?
Right. Generally, Public Works, if it's right-of-way tree that fell, saws it up to where we can pick it up.
Okay. What happens if it is somebody's tree that they had a tractor big enough, they could bring the whole tree out and set it beside the road? Are the contractors going to saw it into links in order to get it into their equipment?
That's not in their contractor, in their contract. But we can probably negotiate some type of effort with them.
I've noticed quite a few of them all over the place, not just in any certain road or whatever. The tree is just too big.
Yes.
To get in their equipment. And then again, it might be depending on which contractor they send or which subcontractor they send out. Because some of them's trailer's not much bigger than a wheelbarrow and some of them are pretty good size, so...
And some of them, as it gets towards the end, they may use lowboys to load the logs on. Where to get them up into the high-sided brush removal vehicles that they have right now, some of them are just too big. But if they bring in a lowboy towards the end, a lot of times they can get those larger pieces in there.
I got you. So we're going to do something about them, we think?
We will get them up.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Gast, if you would just reiterate that anyone can carry their debris to the fairgrounds. And I think you're open seven days a week right now, aren't you?
Yes, seven days a week. And they can carry it in there. We've got a citizen drop-off area. All they got to do is show their proof of residency and we allow them to dump their debris right there.
Thank you, Mr. Gast. I do want to take time now to thank our county administrator on the same issue, if you will. The town of Interlochen is paving roads. And they contacted us last week about, the paving contractor was coming back out and this brush was in the way. Mr. Suggs had contacted Mr. Gast and Sunday they were out there, I think over the, actually Saturday too, picking up all that debris off those roads. So that would not impede the town of Interlochen from paving their roads. So, thank you, Mr. Suggs. Thank you, Mr. Gast, for all your work on that issue.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I forgot one issue. We had a drainage issue where a tree was blocking a ditch and it was right on the edge of Palatka and the county. And Mr. Suggs and some of the people from Palatka helped us get that, the city sent their clam truck by and picked that piece of tree up where it would unblock that ditch. So I just wanted to thank the city for their efforts to help us with their clam truck or clam truck?
Clam shell.
Clam shell truck and Mr. Suggs for helping too.
I tell you, it's a great time when we had that first meeting. We're going to have another one soon, hopefully, with the municipality of the city of Palatka. But working with them has just been a real blessing here lately. And we look forward to more and more going forward at this point. I do have a few things. Flora Home, on the 21st, they're having their Park, Heritage Day Park Festival. And I will be cooking butts out there. If you would like to come out and be a part of that, it's just going to be an all-day event out in Flora Home. You got an email yesterday from Florida Association, actually today, Legislative Conference. Go through that. If there's anything you want to add to the good of the order, they're requesting emails back. Last Friday, at the urging of this board, we sent a letter out to Representative Bobby Payne, Senator Perry, Chris Doolam with Small County Coalition, and Ginger Delog with Florida Association of Counties. And I'm just going to read the body part of it. Because this was at the urging of this board for me to bring this issue to Florida Association of Counties and Small County Coalition that Mr. Turner and I attended. When we brought this issue for reimbursement of our monies from FEMA, that all the counties pitched in to pick this load up. But it was at the urging of this board that we really went to bat for that. And I just want to read some of the bullet points. Putnam County has experienced diminishing reserves due to economic downturn for many years and our recovery is much slower than other counties in our region. Putnam County is projected to be below a self-imposed ordinance on reserves. Putnam County desires a more timely FEMA reimbursement from the state of Florida and the federal government. Putnam County is owed approximately $1.3 million from Hurricane Matthew. Putnam County so far spent $1.4 million on Hurricane Irma. Putnam County might be spending another $300,000 on the Northeastern that past weekend, last weekend. Therefore, Putnam County is spending $3 million on storm-related issue without any FEMA reimbursement. This situation places a severe burden on the reserves, which are already in peril. We are making necessary internal adjustments to offset the drain on our reserves. And one such was to raise the millage. However, we are periously close to our 10-mill cap. We are putting cost-cutting measures in place. But as you requested, we did raise this issue and it's getting a lot of traction in Tallahassee right now. And Representative Payne thanked me Saturday for giving him this information. We're going to see Commissioner Libley. This was something that you said, we need to really raise the flag and we did. And I believe that the tires are turning very fast in Tallahassee right now. So Yvonne, I want to thank you for the last moment, putting all this together. And I mean seriously, at the last hour and we got it out Friday afternoon of Mr. Suggs' help. And it moved up the ladder. So I appreciate the opportunity to do what this board has asked us to do. Those are the end of my comments. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, this meeting will stand adjourned.